We have a safety meeting.
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. We've been together tonight. I'm just gonna review it a little bit. Just run through it quickly and then ask for any changes. We are to be quick in the minutes. The first change I had is I made a mistake. It's a typo. Should've said October 7th meeting, not September 11th meeting, which we already approved. We have Brian presenting about the Energy Board. We're gonna be continuing on our bylaw review. And if we think we're ready, we're gonna take a vote to whether or not to recommend that for a public hearing at our December 20th meeting. And we also need to take a look at the report that Martha kindly drafted that would be going to Martha's Department of Commerce. And the state, the town administration. And if we're good with that. We'll need to approve the notice and get that off to Calista tomorrow by noon. So there's a lot, lot going on. The other thing we need to talk about tonight is the budget for next year, and that's due on November 25th. So that's also due this month. I don't think that's a real rocket science thing, but we should probably touch base about that. And if there's more work to do on it later, I think we can probably take care of that. And that'll be, I think we should do that under item four, where we say, "Review the budget." That'll also include the planning budget in addition to the zoning budget. Any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Let's carry on. We need to approve the minutes of the October 7th meeting. Any changes?
I make a motion to approve October 7th meeting.
I second it.
Changes.
All right. Do we have any changes except for?
Just the date.
Yes, the date.
That was just the agenda.
The minute minutes.
Okay. Stacy seconded. Seeing objections? Let's call those approved. Reports, mail and email. Jane, you're always on topic.
The only mail and email were, which is under the zoning administration, there were four approved permits. One John Sahi for covered entryway on Curtis Hollow Road. Lisa Wesinger on Matbrook Road for a wraparound porch and a woodshed. Evan and Amy Peebles on Malagash for a garden shed. And Ryan and Alex Butas Brown Schoolhouse Road for a storage shed.
All right. Lots of storage happening.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Regional Planning Commission, I don't think we have Kathy with us tonight.
No.
We have not heard from them for a long time. I may reach out to her personally and invite her to rejoin us at a future meeting. Energy Board, Brian, Mr. Kelly, thank you for coming.
Absolutely happy to be here. Thank you for the communication. I have agreed that I would come every quarter. That's kind of what we're thinking right now about that actually, so I guess this will start that. So I'll put it in my calendar so that I remember and you don't have to prompt me.
Okay.
So I'll approach you. So let's see, I have four things that I wanted to touch on briefly. One is that, first of all, Stacy, can you hear me okay? Is this mic fine?
It's coming in now. I don't know.
That may also be my tendency to drop off at the end of sentences, so let me do a little better. Is that better?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get through it. We're having a signal issue, I think. I don't know if that's Okeemaw Valley or our internet there, or my internet here. Elgato, no signal. Is that?
My best. So I'd like to discuss first, so it's obvious that it's been installed. And then I'll just say it's generating energy as expected, which at the going rate we'd be paying nineteen cents a kilowatt hour. Two hundred dollars worth of electricity. It's not perfect math in that way, and I'll do my best as I, I'm starting to do reports that are going out in front porch forum. And actually, we've now decided that I will prepare a little report that we're going to formally at each of our Energy Committee meetings. So that they go into the minutes that will basically kind of, again, without getting too wonky, kind of help people understand this is how much power we generated, this is the value of the power we generated, these are the buildings that are benefiting, so. But roughly speaking, twenty-two hundred dollars worth of electricity since we went on August 26th. We now have set up the group net metering, so when this array first went live, all of the benefit of either the power that went to the building to the firehouse was used by the firehouse, and then anything it didn't use went into the grid. And the credits that were generated that Green Mountain Power gives us for that, which is about seventeen cents a kilowatt hour, were all accruing to the firehouse at the beginning. And so what, what I did recently was to set up a group net metering plan, which basically says, here are the other buildings that we want to be able to receive those benefits going forward, and you need to have an allocation by building. And so that's all been set up, and I basically use the average consumption of the buildings that are receiving benefits. So that's the, obviously the firehouse, but then the library, the food shelf, Robinson Hall, and the town garage. And we've been in and out as to whether or not the food shelf would get any when we originally developed the plan, because someone had been donating their extra credits to the food shelf, which is wonderful. I had the last two months' bills and they weren't getting that anymore, and so I just decided to include them now. And I can adjust this four times a year, so we'll kind of keep track of it so that we don't get one building that's like not getting enough, and then some other building is accruing, you know, too much credit that they wouldn't necessarily use every time. It's, Martha's had to manage this before. It's no big deal, you just kind of need to check, so I'll probably check about quarterly, about right around the time that I'm gonna come talk to you and if there's any adjustments. The next step for us is to file for a serial number from the IRS, which basically is just us kind of getting on the record as having installed this array, having done it within this fiscal year. And it puts them on notice that we will be submitting for the thirty percent rebate at the end of our fiscal year. So we will file a tax form at the end of the fiscal year, which would be right after June 30th. And then that would allow us to receive the funds. So they're just kind of making sure that we're legit when they issue that number. That's what that's all about.
So are you an entity?
It would be through the town. I'm sorry. I'd be coordinating with Calista. The town is the owner of this array. I should have been clear about that.
So the town is getting this tax ID number?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And, and it's actually not going to be a tax, it's a, it's a registration number of some kind.
Got it.
They have their own identity with the IRS as it stands. It may sound here that a town can get tax credit because we don't pay any taxes, but that's the whole point of this Inflation Reduction Act is that they expanded the benefits that homeowners could get now to municipalities and other nonprofits. And we're taking advantage of that. So we should get a check, you know, sometime in our next fiscal year, hopefully soon into it, if we file promptly for a little over thirty thousand dollars off the hundred and nine that we spent. So that'll come back in our costs. But we need to file for that serial number. There's no urgency particularly, although I kind of want to do it soon because given the transition that will now be coming up with the government, I just want it to like not get caught up in that. So, last thing on that is we had an open house in September. It was well-attended. We were able to pay for some food through the first grant that we got from this municipal energy resilience program that we'd applied for, which is a four thousand dollar mini-grant. We're kind of using up the funds now. That was our last event that we could sort of host with this. And we also used that to host the Energy Fair last year, so we did get some good mileage out of the monies. And, which really brings me to my second major thing that I want to talk about, which is the municipal energy resilience plan. Grants for doing weatherization improvements and electrification of the heating and cooling and other systems in the town buildings that we submitted an application for a week bef, well, on the original deadline, which was then pushed out a week so that other towns that they had originally said were not eligible could also apply. That was a request for just under three hundred thousand dollars, so two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, which would cover pretty much everything that was the, the appropriate wish list that was justified by audits by the, by the state authorized auditor of what was happening in the building, overlapping with the, whoever is the sort of the building manager that we identified for each of the buildings who said, yes, we would like this in our building, we'd like this. And so that's been a coordination between them. I had hoped that I would be here telling you whether or not we had gotten any money and that we need to get the select board to, well, to consider the proposal under which the terms come. It should be fine. What we're expecting is those are ARPA monies, and we've accepted ARPA money before. It would be the same basic terms, but haven't seen the terms, so don't know. But we're hopeful that A, we will get a grant, that it will be in the full amount, and that there won't be any major issues. The rub is that they said that they were gonna announce on October 25th. We haven't heard. We would, we do have to have the select board sign off on this, and all the monies need to be committed. That is, we need to accept their terms by the end of this calendar year. And that's sort of an ARPA mandated piece, is that all the funds need to be committed by the end of 2024. Then we have to disperse the funds, that is, do the projects and pay by the end of 2026. And so it will primarily be Bill Nix and myself that will be project managing meetings. And so we're really hoping they get this on soon, because the sooner we get all this done, the sooner we can start it. The sooner, the more likely it is that we'll be able to get everything done. So we're just waiting. And I, you may have heard, you know, just back and forth with Martha, that Martha's now conveyed that from Mark, that they're hearing that we may hear something next week of some kind or another. But importantly, they are gonna push the date out in which we have to accept the terms. So hopefully we can do that at December 25th. If not, next month, probably not next Monday for the TBDs. Any questions on that? Great. Last year was super short. Weatherization, we're gonna shrink our budget from nine hundred to less because that was monies that we used to kind of get materials that we used for weatherization. And we asked people who can afford to reimburse, four materials to reimburse. And we're getting good reimbursement from the homes that we're doing. And so we now have an inventory, and so we don't really need that to purchase the original inventory. And so we've never used the nine hundred that we've arrested in a year, so we're gonna drop the budget this year. Exact TBD, but probably four hundred and fifty percent. And the final thing that I'm supposed to ask you about per our last meeting is we've been thinking about what other things the Energy Committee might want to think about and work on. And in light of all the flooding that we have experienced and watching our fellow citizens be so traumatized in North Carolina and like all these places that are being affected. One, I just wanted to ask whether or not as part of planning, is there anything that's related to climate resilience that is happening? I'm aware of state-related elements that are happening. So Martha, it's like, yeah?
There's a, I'm trying to get what it's, it's CRPG, and I'm not, I don't remember what it's called.
Yeah.
Why it's called that, but there, there's funding for each regional planning commission to update their own energy chapter and update two energy chapters for their regional towns. I'm interested in being one of those two.
Yeah, so I would say from the Energy Committee perspective, we did talk about also, could we, you know, would we update the town plan? There's a, there's definitely a bias towards action in this group around like, it's great if we revamp the plan, but like, you know, there's a lot of things that are, they're aspirational, that may not be something that we could execute on in the next little while. And so I think the sentiment of what we were talking about was, could we just take a step back? Think about where the greatest liabilities are for our town? And then map that against opportunities to, for example, go get grant money to view X. I don't know what it would be yet. Something related to water, or I know there's a lot going on with water already, but like, are there things that, resources in the state, for example, that we might be able to access, including, you know, maybe the town plan is the right way for us to engage in this, but then cherry picking the things that we don't want to do. So I really just wanted to raise it with the planning question. I didn't know if that was on your radar screen, if you'd be okay with us exploring that, just to see if there might be something. Does the idea resonate, or are you like, you know, just get back to what it is, or should we shut up?
No, it sounds like it.
So we have been focusing almost exclusively on the bylaws
Yeah.
in the past eight months.
Yeah.
If the Energy Board wants to take a look at the town plan and make a proposal for what should come next and what should be, you know, if there are things in there that are merely aspirational and not realistic, we should take a look at those.
Yeah.
And if there are things that aren't in there that should be, we should think about that too. So I would, I would think that we would be really open to suggestions.
Okay, great.
And we've made no change to the energy part. I sent Kevin the page.
Okay, great, yeah. And Kathy's had a read on it too. We, we had a discussion about that, and we sort of said, a lot of things that we can edit, but like, it would be editing for editing sake. Like, it would be nice to cast a lens towards the resilience of our town in the face of storms and other things that are, that we are facing and will continue to face. And so that may be, so Martha, maybe at our next meeting, we could learn a little bit more about what Mark is doing and figure out that's where it goes from.
Yeah, I think the CRPG, whatever, it's climate resilience, something, something, so it's two.
Right words.
Yeah.
All right, good, okay. All right, great. So I look forward to learning more about that. Stacy, did you hear that? Are you good?
Yeah, I am good.
Okay, great. All right, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you for that wholesome update. You are first welcome to stay with us, or you can go home and have dinner, which we won't, we won't take that personally. Next is on our typical reports is the zoning administrator, but not seeing Bob Allen. We can skip over that one. Although we do have those for permits that Jane wrote out. Lastly is ZBA reports, and under that, we've talked, conversation about our 2025 budget and report as well. Anything to report from ZBA land?
No. Nothing.
Can we touch on the budget briefly? And my pen's just exploded in my hand, so I'm hoping it's not everywhere. Thank you. We need to submit by November 25th our next year's budget and report. I talked to the town clerk today, who said that it is traditional for the chair to draft the report and circulate it amongst the board. I am happy to do that, if everyone's comfortable with that. And I don't think that needs to be done in a public forum since it's going to the public, right?
She just drafted it.
Drafted it. It does need to be approved by anybody before it gets submitted, right? So I can just draft it, show it to my colleagues, and then we submit that to the town. Okay. So I have a plan on doing that and getting that to you, Stacy, and to you, Jane. And I think it will mostly be touching on the work that we've done this year in revising the of proposing the budget for Ocean City zoning ordinance. And I can do, piggyback a lot off of your report, which spelt it out so nicely. Budget. Can we talk about the budget for a minute? We, I sent around to the board last year's budget that I got from the town clerk. And it seems like we often don't spend our whole budget. It looks like it's running, I don't know, around fifteen, about seventeen. Looks like it's run about fourteen hundred dollars in last year and about eighteen hundred dollars the year before. I think the things that we need to cover are the minutetaker, a sixty-five dollars a meeting, the Vermont standard notices, if we're gonna have any, we'll have to pick an arbitrary number. You know, is it four? I don't know. I'm trying to track down whether or not we're supposed to be making any payments to Okeemaw Valley TV. I suppose there should be some postage, some petty cash, and maybe some funds for training programs every once in a while if we sign up for something. There seems to be a training fee associated with it. Anything else that we should be including in our budget?
Nothing else. I think that covers it.
Would you like to take the lead in proposing the next budget? Or while I'm drafting the report, would you like me to take the lead in that?
The only question I have about the budget is number six is seven eighty-three, which is attributed to the grant we're working on right now, correct?
I didn't hear all, Stacy. Tell me again where I'm looking.
Number six, the planning grant match, seven eighty-three.
Yeah.
So that brings us down to roughly, what, twenty-five hundred? And then we're running about, let's say, eighteen hundred on an average.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So what, I mean, we can talk about it briefly right now. What would we shave off of there to get back to that average? Or do we even want to get back to that average?
I don't know. I have not done a budget for this group before. I mean, looking at that eighteen hundred dollar average, I think we should pick that or pick two thousand and back into there unless there's more to it than that.
I would pick two thousand.
So since we're, since we're running to the end of our planning grant match, we could probably get rid of the seven eighty-three, right?
Yeah. Tell me where you're seeing that, Stacy. Hey Sarah, could you turn him, his volume off a little bit?
The budget request for fiscal year 2024, 2025, that.
Is this, is it this?
I thought you just, it was something Kathy submitted, and I thought you copied it to us on an email. Let me look. Yeah, it was. It was the email you sent on the 28th eve.
Let me find it. Do you have a change?
Got your request then.
When was it sent, Stacy?
Twenty eighth of September, on the 28th.
Is it that Calista sent the general ledger detailed transaction report?
Yeah, yeah, Calista sent it.
I see. Thank you.
Or Calista sent it to you, and then you forwarded it to us.
Yes. There's 2023, 2024, and current. Which one are you looking on?
I actually, this is in the body of.
Look, is it this?
Body of the email.
It didn't have the other attachments for some reason. I don't know on that email.
Oh, maybe I sent that afterwards. Hold on.
The pre-see prior budget below any draft for next year eve.
All right, we're on the same page. All right. The seven eighty-three. So you're thinking we can take that out? That's where you're going at?
We can take that out because we're at the end of that project, and hopefully if we meet our deadlines, it's already been budgeted in, so we should be fine on that if we do get unfortunately hit with the fifteen sixty-six match. I don't think we should cut the secretary's stipends because we never know what could come up throughout the year. So that should be a little bit padded, postage. Have we made any payments to Okeemaw Valley? I don't see any on the actuals.
I don't think we have. So I asked the town clerk today, and she said that no one has asked her to, and she hasn't received an invoice, so I don't have any information about that. I guess we should talk to Patrick and, and find out.
And I don't know if I, I've ever seen an invoice from Okeemaw Valley. I think it's more in, and correct me if I'm wrong, who's there? Who's there for Okeemaw?
Sarah.
Sarah? I don't know if Sarah, but is it more in form of a donation than an invoice?
I, I can't speed on that. I go down. Yeah, she's not sure. So we'll have to get to the bottom of that.
So if we use these numbers and don't use all of it, so, I mean, you know, they'll take it back, so.
Yeah.
It's better to err on the side of too much.
I agree.
Okay. So I think our budget will look pretty much like last year's budget. And we can, we'll be, we'll be rolled on the dice on that matching grant match, because it means it would have to get out of the select board by January 31st.
Right.
Okay. I'm happy to write this up along with the report and circulate it to this board, if that seems good. And I can do that by the end of next week.
Yeah, and the only thing I can, I can comment on is the match should already be cooked into it for this fiscal year. We're really looking at twenty-five, twenty-six for the next budget.
When does that start? July?
July 1st, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, so you're, you must be right then. Yeah. Okay, that makes sense. All right. Anything more on report or budget? Okay. Moving on. We're on agenda item number five, which is continuing this review of the readiness zoning ordinance. We are hoping to be at a place where we can vote tonight to schedule a public hearing if we feel like we're satisfied with where it's at. I think I'm gonna hand it over to you, Martha, to talk about current status and any last changes.
Okay. Last time, one of the things that was a little up in the air, I believe, was this site plan section. Maybe I should start there and come back to this other section. Oh, and I'll share my screen. Can I share my screen? Says sharing is not turned on. Okay. So this first section of site plan review was problematic in the way it was wording, and then the exclusion section in particular was very confusing. As it said, site plan is required except for daycare group homes, agricultural activities, one and two family homes. And then it's required for any conditional use, and we're indicated in section 2.4. There were a bunch of asterisks in section 2.4 indicating that site plan review was required, but they were all under conditional use. So it was saying that it was kind of like a belt and So it was saying that, it was kind of like a belt and suspenders, it's like you have to require. Site plan if it's listed under conditional use. Or if it has an asterisk, so anyway, it was just confusing. So the whole thing was just simplified and reworded, it says, uh, now it says all applications for development. Requiring approval by the planning commission or the zoning board of adjustment shall require site plan review and approval. Period. And I went through section two point four, all the districts and removed all the asterisks. Except for. Let me see if I can jump there. Except for accessory on farm business because you do require, that's permitted use, but you do require site plan approval. So that's really the only one that still needs to have an asterisk next to it indicating. Site plan review. Priority because, I mean, all of the conditional uses already require site plan review. So we just did a bunch of clarifying. And there was another thing, so section five point three references. Section six point oh point two.
Six point oh point two?
Um, six point oh two B. Zip over there. Six point oh two E. The only thing we did there was it's, it referenced a site development plan, everywhere else in the document, it talks about a site plan. As far as we can tell, there's the same thing when I was going over this with Eve, so we just. Well, maybe it's two places where it says site development plan, we're just striking development. So it's not confusing that there's two different types of site plans, there's only one, um. Also in six point oh three D, just below that. I noticed that it says decisions shall be sent by certified mail to the applicant. Um, it didn't mention that they also have to be mailed to every person who. Participated in the hearing, so I added that also, because that's a requirement.
Does it have to be certified? Do we have to say that?
It has to go certified to the applicant, it doesn't have to go certified to the other participants, can just go via regular. And another small thing under site plan review. Three, eight point three, okay, again when I was going over this with Eve. Remember the noxious weed thing?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm in five point five.
This is just about adding the reference to the appendix?
Yeah, well.
Oh, I remember, coming back now.
Okay, so protection of natural resources. Uh, Eve wanted to specifically, we've got it, Eve, there's an appendix A in there that lists noxious weeds. Um, doesn't really refer to it anywhere in the document, but. Um, so we decided this was a pretty good place for it, under protection of natural resources. Commission, that section starts with the commission may require that structures, et cetera. Are located to avoid impacts to things like surface water, wetlands, so on and so forth. And I just added the commission may, and then maybe I should put an also there, commission may also restrict the use of noxious weeds, see appendix A. I think an also would be.
Well, can you explain what the use of noxious weeds really means?
Well, so already pre-existing in our zoning code was appendix A. It never got referenced anywhere in the document. But it is the list of noxious weeds, uh, that the state of Vermont. Would prefer people not use in their landscape.
So. Maybe that needs to be clarified, like what you can, like. The planting of noxious weeds, the use of noxious weeds for what? Landscaping?
You wanna add like in landscape?
Maybe.
Okay.
Just to clarify, uh, restrict the use of noxious weeds like that. In making tea, in like, you know, cooking, like what?
Like milfoil, Karen, if anyone wants to plant milfoil.
Well, it can't, it's in the water.
That works for me, Stacy, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Was there, uh, there's not an appendix for noxious weeds though?
There is, the appendix is already there. Um, we're just adding some clarification of why it's there.
Okay.
I think that's mainly it, I was going through the document one more time, I noticed a missing A. So I added that, I don't think that's gonna cause anyone any problems. One question I did have was, we talked a lot about the use of the word family versus household. One place where the word family is also used is. It's called a family childcare home and a family childcare facility. I thought if you wanted to just remove the word family from that, I don't think it really adds anything. I think you could just say childcare home and childcare facility.
So, these kinds of things make me nervous because I haven't thought it through, like. Is family childcare home meant to be limited to your family as opposed to a commercial enterprise? What is a family childcare home? What section is that?
Or is it, uh, if people foster children, is that family childcare?
It's basically like one of the home occupations that you're allowed to have, um. So, family childcare home or facility as used in this section means a home or facility where the owner or occupator. Uh, operator is licensed or registered by the state of Vermont for childcare. A family childcare home serving six or fewer children, full-time or a few or part-time. Shall be considered a permitted single household residential use of property. Family childcare facility serving more than six full-time and four part-time children will be subject to conditional use approval.
So it has nothing to do with your family, it just means you're in a home as opposed to, uh.
Yeah, I actually think they used the word family and there's a little confusing.
Yeah.
So is family childcare home or facility, uh, state term at all? It's in quotation marks, like it's a term of art.
I believe it is, but I don't think you lose anything by striking the word family from that.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty sure.
Um, if you're sure that it doesn't somehow untie it from the state statutory structure. I can be okay with that, but I, I don't wanna sort of create something new that is supposed to be tied back to the legislative.
No, I mean, in terms of like how this is defined and the number of children and everything, that's all the same.
I mean, it, like, in plain English, it seems, sounds better to call it a home childcare facility. Instead of childcare home. Uh, but whatever, I, I can't get, I can't get too worked up about this one.
Okay, but everyone's okay with just getting rid of the word family?
Yes.
So we call it, uh, a.
Just childcare home or childcare facility, they're two separate things.
What's different?
Well, one is in your home, um. And one, as you would say, it's like a daycare center, which doesn't necessarily have to be in your home, I suppose it could be.
So why did they call it a family childcare facility? Why wouldn't they just call it a childcare facility?
That I do not know.
That's the question. Okay. Can we just do a, uh, I'm fine doing that, let's just do a double check on.
Yeah.
And statutory, just to make sure we're not changing anything that's.
So, okay to remove as long as it's not affecting anything statutorily, okay.
You okay with that Stacy?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
The only tiny other thing that I did when I was going through it is. Was I inserted in, um, section three point eight to refer to performance standards. Under home occupation and home business, you mentioned the performance standards and I just, I think in parentheses put. Section three point eight, because it's a new thing.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, we like to point people in the right direction.
We do, maybe that will have a better outcome overall.
So that's, that's, that's it for changes, so.
So I think, um, I think we're at the point where we should think about. If you found anything in your review that you wanna point out as a. Question or mistake or scrupulous error?
So I have a couple, a couple of things, under the charts, the two point four two. Where it says we struck out under little use column, two family dwelling unit. And we put home-based business, isn't that a permitted use?
Two point four two, rural residential. And. Under, so under conditional use, two family dwelling is crossed out?
Two family dwelling is crossed out and it says home-based business, isn't home-based business a permitted use?
Uh, I don't think so, I'm pretty sure that's conditional.
Why am I not seeing this?
It's on page nine.
Uh, going around in circles here. Alright, let me find it. Okay, a home-based business is a conditional use in all districts.
Was it left off the chart last time in the RR ten? Was it left off the chart in the RR ten, or was that a mistake? What was going on with that?
It was, it was left, it was left off the chart in one of them, yes. I think it was in the, it was in the RR ten, or it was left off.
So you're just inserting it back onto the chart?
Right, yep.
Does that make sense Stacy? I think it got left off the RR ten chart a long time ago. And it's supposed to be a conditional use, so it's just putting it on there.
And then the same would apply for the multi-dwelling unit?
On the RR ten?
It's on the other districts, but it's not on the RR ten.
I think it's not allowed in the RR ten. The multi.
So multi-household dwelling units are not allowed in the RR ten, where does it state that?
Uh, because they are, I mean, they're not allowed in the RR ten because they're not appearing on the chart. But I'm remembering they never were in the RR ten because that was the whole issue with repurposing historic carriage houses. And giving them kind of a, or barns, whatever they are, giving them kind of a pass for multi-unit in the RR ten. When those weren't allowed in the RR ten, I think that was the issue with that conversation that we had. Right, does that sound familiar?
Raise your hand.
Yeah, so I, I don't think that multi-unit were ever allowed in the RR ten. And we've now expanded that to, um, yeah, what do we expect?
It's in the three villages, I believe is the only place.
So the multi-unit is only in the three villages and that's consistent with the grant application. Which was trying to have denser dwellings in Felsville and the Hamlets. South Reading and, uh, and Swin.
And so I, I guess just for clarification, where, because I, I read all this today and I didn't see where it said. In the RR ten that, that was not a permitted use, or are we? Going back on it, it doesn't state it, then it's not permitted.
I think that's it, if it's not listed, then it's not happening.
Oh, actually you've got it in the RR five too.
Yeah, we have it in the RR five, RR one.
So the village is in the RR five.
The RR five always had it though, because it's not, uh, redlined, right?
Right.
Right.
So I don't think we've changed that, I don't think we've changed that, um, except. Yeah, so we're not adding it to the RR ten.
Okay.
Alright.
And then there was the thing, remember I told you about the, and you said the numbers were wrong? When I, I'm trying to remember myself, um, that. One says six or few and one says eight or fewer.
Are these recovery residences?
Yeah.
Is the number wrong?
I think that's what you said, I told you about that.
Where are you? Which district?
Uh, ten, twenty-five and five.
You decided to eliminate group homes that serve more than eight people? You decided to eliminate group homes that serve more than eight people?
Did we? But so then in RR one?
So.
It's here in RR one, it's here in RR five, the group home serving eight or fewer.
Should be a permitted use in all districts.
And then, okay, so and then for more than eight people, it's a conditional use permit.
Right.
You eliminated it as a, as a use for more.
Okay, so we need to eliminate them.
Are you maybe, I wonder if you're looking at an older version of the document?
Says all your marks on it.
So I think that has now been taken out in the latest draft, see the one I'm looking at. Okay, that's RR one, South Rivingham, wait, let me look into South Rivingham.
Yeah, group home serving more than eight people has been struck.
Yeah, so I think that must be the.
All right, then you, this is.
A minor point, but camp, I do, I don't remember having much discussion about camps, but it's in every district, but. Uh, RCA Hammondsville.
Recall any conversation about camps.
But it's permitted in all the districts, but eliminated or not, I mean, not eliminated, but just not on the list.
Yeah, there are seasonal camps, seasonal camps, seasonal camps.
Well, that's funny.
It's in all of them.
So what are you suggesting, that it should be added to Hammondsville?
Well, we should, we should, I think, try to closely align them as much as possible.
Yeah. I can't think of any reason why you would have it in every other district except Hammondsville. It was like someone left it off the list.
Yeah.
I don't see any downside to it.
I'm just checking. Okay, so it's in twenty five, it's in ten.
Not in Felchville.
It's in South Rivingham. It's not in Hammondsville.
Yep.
And it's not in Felchville.
Not in Felchville.
Let me look at the definition.
Not in mining district either.
A building used for temporary and or seasonal living quarters that is typically rustic in nature. Are there such things in Felchville or Hammondsville?
Sure, that's loaded.
Say that again Stacy?
Rustic in nature, that's kind of a loaded comment. It's like what what? Any, a lot of things could be considered rustic.
I don't think we were talking about, I think we were saying camp.
It was just the definition.
Oh.
The rustic. The tech, it it's seasonal, I mean, it it's not meant to be year round, it's seasonal, probably not insulated, maybe or maybe not with all. Modern communities, um. Do you think it, do you think it should be in all districts Stacy?
I I would think it it should be, but I don't wanna waste too much time on this, it's really not, it it's it's not worth too much time. I just thought it interesting, it was left off.
I mean, I could, the only argument I could imagine would be that, and and Hammondsville less so, but in Felchville. Um, where we're trying to increase um housing opportunities for people. Maybe space is better used for full time housing rather than um seasonal housing. Maybe that's better left for out in the woods, I don't know.
I think that's where they typically are, which is maybe why it was left out of a couple of the more densely populated areas, maybe.
Pass it, pass on it, so we just said?
Yeah, yeah, we can pass on it.
Okay. Other things?
Uh, on page twenty one, we have the three examples, should we, it's just a clerical type thing or. Keeping things clear, should we list example one, example two, example three on each of those diagrams?
Works for me. Can we do that Martha?
Please note that the large law in examples two and three could not be further simplifieded. The restrictions that that would be noted on this. Yeah, yeah.
Especially since we refer to them as examples two and three. Yep, good catch.
Twenty eight, the performance standards, that's section. On page twenty eight, section three eight.
Yeah.
So that applies to all districts, which it's noted under applicability. And then this is a, I just, you know, for the public, for us, for everyone. This review going forward, this is a new section.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I know we did discuss some decibel readings and did we determine that eighty and seventy and. The sixty five, eighty, the fifty, seventy, did we have discussion agree that those were acceptable to us?
I think we went over them pretty carefully at the time and as I recall, we were sort of more generous than. Some of them, I, as I recall, the numbers were, I have to go back three binders ago, but the numbers were a lot. Lower in other towns in ways that seemed not realistic, so that if you need to run your wood splitter, you need to run your wood splitter. If you need to cut the grass, um, you don't wanna have that so low, you know, wood stock, I don't know how they cut their grass without violating their noise ordinance. But I I think, I can't recreate it now, um, but I think we were pretty comfortable and and erring to the side of generous. Back when we led these.
Yeah, I can't find it off the top of my head, we, there was a handout that had examples of what.
Right.
Each of those is a, you know, typical and.
Well, I just, I I I guess I I only wanted to sort of. Zero in on this because it it seemed low to me when I was reviewing it over the past few days and. Then today I went back and, you know, like a table saw is generally a hundred decibels, a chainsaw a hundred and twenty five, and I do remember E D talking about loving to use your chainsaw. So I do remember some of the conversation. Leaf blowers ninety five, and when you compare those to the limits here. Doesn't seem.
I I think the numbers were pretty, I think we were comfortable with these then, um. And remember that these are really supposed to apply to noises that are. Expected to be regular permanent features, not, and we specifically carved out occasional noise from customary activity. Like property maintenance, uh, emergency work, celebrations, stuff like that. So I I think if you're running a table saw because you're doing some carpentry, I think that totally fits within the carve out.
Okay.
Uh, but you know, if, uh, what I hope we can do tonight is recommend this for the public hearing on December second. We can also go back to that uh handout chart with the noise levels and just. Um, satisfy ourselves that that we did the analysis that we're thinking we did of those numbers. I would imagine we still have a little bit of wiggle room to change that at the public hearing.
And if it comes up at public hearing, you know, that'll give us even more purpose to look at it again.
Yes. So we have to all go back in our notes and find that handout. But the real protection for people is that it's if you're just doing maintaining your house or you're leaf blowing or cutting the grass. That's not, uh, that's not the issue here, it's if someone is deciding to open a sawmill next to you and that saw is running. All day, every day, um, and is a regular permanent use of their property, that's what it's designed to address.
Yeah, and I understand that that's what it's designed to do, I just, you know, you get disputes between neighbors and. The neighbor wanting to complain about the other neighbor brings up this document and says, look, he's going over, she's going over these limits. I want something about it, and then that gives them all the teeth to do something about it when the other person feels that they're just doing. Maintenance on their property.
Yeah, well, let's, let's go back and revisit those numbers, let's find the handout, we should probably bring that to the hearing anyway. Other things?
On fifty seven, item six. The dwelling.
What was the page?
Which page?
Page fifty seven. I don't like the the verbiage discretion in there, can we maybe condense that to the dwelling units permitted may be a varied types?
What what number?
Number six.
Number six? The dwelling units permitted may at the discretion of Z B A and planning commission be of varied types. Including one household, two household and multi household, what did you wanna add?
Stacy, what did you want that to say instead?
I think at at, I'm not comfortable with at the discretion of the Z B A and planning commission, if we could strike that, I think it's simpler in in. More forward to just say the dwelling units permitted may be a varied types, etc.
This is a P U Ds, right? The planned unit developments?
Correct.
Uh, is there any case where you would not want it to be one of those types?
No, 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 I'm fine with those types, I did the the the. At the discretion of just it, it doesn't make me too comfortable.
It's too subjective?
Yeah, that's the word, thank you Martha.
So if we take that out, it means that someone who's creating a P U D has carp lashed to do whatever type they want, is that what we want?
No.
You know, when it's, uh, discretion, it just, it just seems like, like Martha said, it's too subjective. Maybe we come up with another. Way of saying it, I I don't think we. I don't think it opens it up, taking that out, I don't think it opens us us up to anything.
It does say a varied types, including, so it's really not exclusive as it's worded right now.
Right.
Well, right now, I think it's up to, I think the Z B A or the planning commission, if they had reason to not want a certain type, probably has that discretion. If we take it out, it means that whoever the developer is can do whatever they want and the planning commission has, oh, Z B A has lost. The ability to influence whether it's a single family, a two family or a multifamily, sorry.
Like, I think we've lost the ability, we, we have that under permitted and conditional use. Not in the other sections, I don't think striking that eliminates our ability to be involved in the process.
So where, in which districts can you have P U Ds?
P U Ds are kind of a, their own animal, it's like saying, okay, I've got these three five acre lots, I wanna combine them and I wanna have. Um, you know, some multi family housing here and I wanna have, you know, maybe some some mixed use, something over here, it's it's.
So could it be in the RR ten?
Yes.
Okay, so if we took out the discretion of the Z B A or planning committee, commission. This says you could have a multifamily in the RR ten, which you can't. So there's no multi, what are we saying? Multi household, um, so. At a minimum, I think we'd have to reference the appropriate uh district, like as is appropriate to the district. Cuz if we say, if you're doing a P U D, you can have varied types of units, including multi household. And I wanna make a P U D in the RR ten, I can say, oh, look, I can have multi household, it says it right here, even though it's in the RR ten.
I mean, I mean, that's kind of what the P U D is, it allows you to sort of suspend the zoning regulations, create. A particular exception, you know, it's an exception within, that has to meet all these criteria. All the P U D criteria, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to meet all the underlying criteria because. That's what it is, it's like a a special exception.
So I guess if we don't want multifamily housing in the RR ten or the RC twenty five. It doesn't make sense to me to have a go around on that for a developer development.
Well, I I think I I I go back to. The P U D and, you know, we we're going to, you know, permitted, it's not a permitted use, so someone wishing to do a P U D or an H O A. They need to submit the plan, all the associated documents. Site plans, surveys, um, water. Options and 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 present that to the commission, the Z B A, the planning commission, and then as it's referenced in the. The bylaws, we offer, if it's us, we offer suggestions, ideas. And how to move forward with the process to get an approval. So we're not taking away, I just, again, it it's really just about that word discretion, because that's very subjective and we may. At this point, think one way, ten, fifteen, twenty years. You get, you know, more conservative, more liberal people in there and then.
Then they'll change it in twenty years. You you just object to the word discretionary.
Right.
So is there another word that can be used? Cuz it's under the purview of the P C to say whether, uh, it will be allowed, like what Martha was describing.
Well, I think, I think it's pretty much everywhere in this document, under conditional uses and exceptions. Where it's under the purview of the planning commission and the Z B A to, like I said, offer suggestions, come up with our alternative ways. We don't like this, we do like this, and then we go through the process of the hearings. They agree, the developer agrees, they don't agree, the project dies or the project moves. They agree, the developer agrees, they don't agree, the project dies, or the project moves on.
But if you're using the word discretionary, uh, it gives the Planning Commission a little more power. Like, if, if, if the developer, if the developer were to take that to court, they could win if the, even if the Planning Commission disagreed with what, I think that word discretionary means that you give the Planning Commission, the ZBAA, the power to determine whether that thing that, that is going to be built should be built in that place.
What if we rewrote it to be something like the ZBAA and the Planning Commission, may allow dwelling units to be of varied types, including one household, two household, and multi-household?
Yeah.
It's the same thing. It's saying the same thing.
So I, I could be comfortable saying the ZBAA and Planning Commission may permit, let's keep with the same words, may permit dwelling units to be of varied types.
I think you nailed it.
Okay. Okay, cool. Let's get rid of that bad word discretion.
Thank you.
All right. What else, Stacy? Anything else on your list?
I do have a few more things. You bear with.
Wait, before you, do you want to list them? So the ZBAA and Planning Commission may permit dwelling units to be of varied types, including?
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep, keep the rest of it the same.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, go on, Stacy.
So in page, starting on page sixty, the hazard, um, five point five, that whole section really, I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything, and maybe this is a, a question geared towards Martha. We, you know, we don't, we've had discussion about not wanting to jeopardize our national flood insurance. Is there anything here that you think would, any of these, and we haven't changed this much, thankfully, but is there anything in here that you think would jeopardize that?
Well, we didn't change anything.
I don't think we touched any of the flood stuff for that reason.
Right.
I think the flood stuff is complicated enough. It, it is, um, probably due for a review, but I think that would have to be done really carefully.
Yeah.
Town attorney, Mont Lake of Cities and Towns, or something like that, because it's a lot of potential for unintended consequences, which we don't want.
I completely agree. There are a few red lines in there, and I just wanted to, you know, one word can make a huge difference, as, as, as we all know. So I just want to make sure that there's nothing in there that we're, we're adding, changing, redlining that could impact that until we get into a situation where we can do a major review of this section.
Yeah, the only thing we did was clarify that the accessory structures that are allowed can't be non, have to be non-residential, so you're not putting people in harm's way.
And you think that, that is okay, making that clarification? And I agree with it completely, but I just want to make sure that making that change doesn't impact our position at all.
I, not that I know of. I mean, it's, it's been a while since I looked at the state flood hazard regulations, but, um,
And again, he changes, but like, you know, just that one change that you highlighted, non-residential. Making that change, I just want to make sure, again, that we're not jeopardizing anything.
I don't think we are, and that came out of a conversation about, uh, let me see if I can recreate it. We were talking about accessory dwelling units and, um, kind of the push to create accessory dwelling units in all sorts of structures, or garages, or sheds, or whatever, for housing purposes. And then wanting to clarify that access, accessory structures are not okay in the flood hazard area if they're going to be used for residential. Um, so the accessory structures were already allowed, and I think it's just a clarification that that's not one that's intended to be turned into an ADU. Because you don't want to put people in a flood zone.
Exactly. Okay, that, that was my only comment on that. And then on page seventy-nine, on section D, three D, should that read, "If the zoning administrator fails to act, should we also include the ZBAA in case the ZA doesn't act, then the ZBAA takes over?"
Well, this is a sub under no zoning permit shall be issued by the zoning administrator. And then there's A, B, C, and D. So that's why it's referencing the, if the zoning administrator fails to act.
Okay, so it's immediately, if the zoning administrator fails to act, then their option is to go directly to the court. Not go to the ZBAA. Before the court.
Within thirty days.
Is there a role for the ZBAA between ZA and the court?
You can always appeal any action or non-action of the ZA to the zoning board.
I'm just wondering if we should add language in there that the next step would be the ZBAA, and then the next step after that would be the court.
I mean, I think the applicant is entitled to go to the court.
Oh, sure. Knee face.
This is sort of their statutory option to enforce, right? I mean, can the?
It used to say shall be considered deemed approved or deemed issued. And I heard from an attorney at BLCT that it's not automatic. So, you know, if you, if that happens, the deadline passes, you don't hear anything, or whatever. You don't automatically get your permit. You have to go to court and say, you know, "I applied, it's been thirty-one days, I haven't got my permit, I haven't heard anything."
Could the ZBAA do that?
Well, I mean.
So if I applied for a permit, I don't hear anything from the ZA, could I then write a note to the ZBAA and say, "The ZA has been ghosting me. Um, can you please direct the ZA to issue a permit, or can you issue a permit yourself?"
I mean, you can. I don't think it has to go that way. I think someone could go directly to the environmental court, but I, I'm just going to have to look into that. I'm not positive.
I agree. The ZA and the ZBAA above that in that same paragraph and below that. But in that midsection, we skip over the ZBAA and tell them they immediately should go to court.
Which section says they should go to the ZBAA?
Uh, D, in that same paragraph, three D, on page seventy-nine.
Each permit issued shall require the applicant posting notice. I'm looking at, within thirty days.
I just don't want to tell somebody that doesn't hear the ZBAA to go immediately to the court and fight off a lawsuit when we could maybe, the ZBAA could maybe stopgap that and figure it out before it gets to a court, the court.
I agree with that.
But they're not filing a lawsuit. They're just going to get permission.
Well, it's harder, and maybe they need to consult a lawyer. And then it leaves it in the hands of the environmental court, as opposed to keeping it in town and moving sort of.
So, Martha, you're saying that we, as the ZBAA, have the power to grant a permit, to write, to sign off on a permit?
Well, that's what I'm going to look up. Um, but I can't right now.
Because it isn't just the zoning board's adjustments.
Was it, does it reference forty-four sixty-four? What's crossed out?
Forty-four, forty-eight, forty-four, forty-nine?
If the administrative officer fails to act with regard to a complete application for a permit within thirty days, whether by issuing a decision or by making a referral to the appropriate municipal panel, a permit shall be deemed issued on the thirty-first day. But what I've been told by attorney, that that's nice, that, that sounds automatic, but it's not automatic. You have to go to the environmental court to enforce that.
So if the zoning administrator doesn't do the thing, and I get to the right number of days and it's deemed issued, that doesn't mean I can just go start building?
Right.
I have to actually request it from the environmental court, even though it doesn't say that anymore.
I'm going by what I've heard from attorneys.
Can you double check?
From the Mont Lake of Cities and Towns.
I just, I just think it lies for us, like I said, to have that stopgap, and there's still that, the, the other committee, as it's referenced in what you just read us, Martha, has the ability to move the process forward instead of us getting a lawsuit.
I, I didn't catch most of them. Did you?
I think it was, uh, just saying that we would, I, I was reading, but, so, Stacy, I think what you're saying is that why send it to the court if we can deal it at the ZBAA? I'm looking at section six point two, which says anybody can appeal, any interested person, interested person? Is that even the person who's putting forth the request? May appeal a decision or act of the ZA within fifteen days of the date of the decision. No, that's not quite right.
Well, I mean, I guess you could, I wouldn't spell it out that you have to do it as X, Y, and Z because it's not spelled out that way in statute. But there's nothing that would prevent someone from getting on the phone to the zoning board and saying, "Hey, you know, I requested this permit. I haven't heard anything." You know, it's just an informal thing. I wouldn't put it in the bylaws.
Could we put it in and say the applicant may appeal to the ZBAA or to the environmental division? Without some.
For the environmental decision.
So if we just add the applicant may appeal, it says now to the environmental division, could we add in the applicant may appeal to the ZBAA or the environmental division? Would that solve it?
Yeah, I guess that could solve it too. And it's, then it's their choice. They can either come to the ZBAA and have a discussion, or immediately get their attorney to the court.
Straight to enforcing.
But can the ZBAA issue permits?
Yeah, for permitted use.
Or, like, if, if one of these people here that got, that Bob Allen signed off came to me, I could just sign off on it?
I think we'd have to maybe have a hearing?
I think you'd have to, yeah.
We would.
You're declaring a decision or a non-decision of the ZBAA.
That maybe we need to say after a hearing can go to the ZBAA.
Well, appeal to.
Appeal. So that was, that's what you, as appeal to the ZBAA, meaning the ZBAA can take the issue up? They have the legal authority to take up the issue?
Yeah, so Jane, you make a really good point. If one of those applications were ignored by our ZA in thirty-one days, they're like, "I haven't heard, he doesn't like me, or she doesn't like me, he's ignoring me. Can you help with this?" They could go to us and try to get it solved, or they could get their attorney involved and go directly to the environmental court. Luckily, we don't have too many of these situ, or I don't even know if we've had any of these situations because our, our ZA is pretty proactive with these permits, but.
Why don't we say that we'll include that language, that applicant may appeal to the ZBAA or the environmental court, and if I find out that for some reason you can't do that, I'll just.
I like that.
Let me just make a note. D on page.
What's next, Stacy?
So, thank you for indulging me. I'm finished with all of my comments.
Okay. I am glad to see your thorough document review. Thank you for pointing all those things out. All right, um, I think we're at the point where we don't have any further questions on the red line, as has been worked on for past years and discussed again tonight. I would move that we designate December, our December second meeting as a public hearing on the current, uh, draft revisions, proposed revisions, and take the necessary steps to put a notice in the Vermont standard, um, which Martha has drafted and we can look at next. Get this up on, is it the Mark website or the Town website?
Uh, that's what I wanted to ask you guys.
Okay.
Do you, we can, we can do either one or both.
Probably both.
Both, okay. And take the other steps necessary to hold that public hearing. Yeah, that's my motion. Is there a second?
I see.
Oh, no, oh, no, we didn't lose you. Uh, all in favor of moving the draft to the next phase of the public hearing and public review process?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
So I will be zooming in that.
Okay. Stacy's going to zoom in, um, December second. Stacy, will you be?
I will likely be zooming in on that meeting as well, unless something changes.
I will plan to be here with Sarah, holding down fort, and hopefully Rhett.
And Shanann.
And Shanann. And Martha. You better be there, Martha. All right. Um, that's phenomenal. I'm really, uh, excited by this. Let's see. As part of this, we also need to look at the, the draft public hearing notice, but also the, uh, final review of the municipal bylaw reporting form, which Martha has kindly prepared for us. And I, I know that you saw it, Stacy, because you emailed me about it. We sent around a, kind of a summary version of it, because in the printout from the computer, it was chopping off the last couple of lines. This form is what we have to submit to. This form is what we have to submit to adjacent townships and also Mark and the state. Do we have to send to the state?
Yeah.
We have to send to whoever Martha tells me we have to send it to. And it's basically describing everything that has happened in the draft. Um, I have looked at it and don't have any comments or questions. I think you actually did a really nice job, Martha, summarizing what is pretty complicated. Um, Stacy or Jane, do you have any comments on it?
Yeah, thank you, Martha. This is, it's it's really great. I think it's well done.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna plan to use this, um, document as the base for our our report that's gonna be due, um, to the town clerk in December. Um, so no comments, no changes?
My my only comment is it does in its full format, not not chopped off in section, um, you know, the bottom parts of some of those sections. The do we get, do we have to get this out to the public? With the draft?
It, well, it needs to be available, so Calista would have a copy. Um, you could, you have to post it.
Okay, so I I think my only, my only emphasis would be that we get it in its complete type instead of cut off in those sections. Cause it it was confusing and it's very helpful seeing it all together like this.
Yeah. Yeah, so maybe we take the cut and paste version.
Yeah, we can, I mean, that one's kind of abbreviated, but we can add more information to it, so it makes more sense.
Okay, so Martha, just to clarify, there'll be a physical copy in town hall. Will there be a copy posted on the town website as well?
Uh, that's, yeah, with, yes.
I think we should.
Yeah.
If we can post it right under the red line.
And this has to go to, you know, the everybody that you're sending everything to, the notice, the report, and the bylaws.
Can you help with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And we can email it to them?
Yes.
Got that, that's great. Um, okay, yeah.
On the noise regulation on the section, it seems to be concentrated on the lawn hores and weed blowers and chainsaws. What about rifle ranges from somebody's backyard? That came up right here in the village some years ago. One of these houses over here, somebody was regularly target practicing in their backyard with a rifle. They complained to the select board and the select board told them there are no restrictions against it.
I think rifle ranges have their own scheme.
I'm not saying, right, remember, somebody set some targets in their backyard and they regularly up there.
Like a month ago?
Like regularly like?
Like for an hour or like all day every day? Or hours?
Yeah, one day hours?
Well, it is not gonna pin down every last detail. Um, y- you have to go through it and and look. I think it's where it's expected to be persistent and ongoing. You know, old old-fashioned neighborliness should always come first.
Yeah.
Uh, and
Good.
Maybe people shouldn't do stuff that makes their neighbors crazy, but.
Ooh, and like what about fireworks and those kinds of things too?
Which nobody does.
I I think someone's going out and shooting, you know, for a a not regular, ongoing, multi-hour affair often, probably would not be prohibited by this, but it would have to go through the analysis and see where it would fall. And it may not fall squarely, it may fall in a gray zone.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if someone were setting up a use, um, having a public range and people can come from nine to five, Monday through Friday, shoot on the property, that's different than someone just going out and target practicing occasionally. Then you're, you know, you're setting up a business and it's happening on a regular basis.
We do not have a noise ordinance like Woodstock or Stone. Uh, that would be up to the select board. If they want us to draft one, I'm happy to give it a go. But I don't think that that's where the town is at. But if you do, that's a request probably to the select board.
And and there are limits, stat- you know, legal limits on what you actually can do in that regard.
I also feel like there is some in Vermont, I could be misremembering, but I feel like there is actually some reference to rifle ranges that is separate, but I I can't remember off the top of my head. I've looked it up lately.
Yeah, I don't remember details either. I think there may be time restrictions, like between sundown and sunrise, you're not supposed to be shooting, but that's kind of
Stark.
Hopefully obvious, but.
That makes a big question. Uh, I think this is an attempt to curtail really egregious activities that ruin the quality of life on a persistent level for someone else, um, without unduly burdening someone in in activities that are normal in their world. Um, and hopefully it draws that line, but it's not gonna please everyone. And it won't, it won't eliminate every behavior and it will probably affect someone in a way they don't want possibly, but it it should, it it was lightly crafted to do the most benefit with the least harm, hopefully. That's the goal. Okay, um. So if we could get, we need to, we need to reformat the bylaw reporting form for posting on the website, but in terms of content as it appears now, uh, I move to approve that so that we can um, send that out to the people who need to get it and post that on our town website for review. By whoever wants to see it. Sarah, second?
Second. Third.
Favorite?
Aye.
All right. Um, so I'll work with you on that. We're gonna have to talk a little soon, like tomorrow.
Yep.
The draft public hearing notice, again, Martha. We've definitely gotten our grant money worth, Martha. Um, Martha has prepared this notice, um, the yellow parts we need to talk about, Monday, December second, seven P M, that's confirmed as the public hearing. Um, email to the planning commission, we have to put in our email address.
I put in P C at ReadingBT.net, I think.
Is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, P C at Reading.
Reading BT.
T dot net. Okay. And what was the last thing that we needed to put in?
The website.
Yeah.
Will this be on the Mark website or should it just be on the town?
It can be on either or both. I don't know what's involved in getting things on the website, is that fairly straightforward or?
I don't know. Getting things on our website? You mean the Reading website?
Reading website.
The stuff goes up there, like.
Uh, yeah, it's. Yeah. We can, we can, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just contacting Calista and asking her to do it.
So are we Reading.gov? No, Reading BT, what is it?
P C at Reading BT.
What's it next?
The town. I don't know what the town website.
Dot govoffice.com.
Oh, it's, yeah, Reading.gov.
Dot com or? I'll put it on both. I'll I'll put it, I can put in Marx and put in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the more, the more it's out there, the better.
Yeah, ReadingBT.govoffice.com. You are absolutely right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other changes to this public hearing notice? Very none. I move that we approve this public hearing notice uh, to be posted in the places it needs to be posted, including the town website and uh, probably the Reading Greenhouse.
Town Hall.
Town Hall and Vermont Standard.
Yeah, three places in town. Um, including the town clerk's office.
The Canadian Library.
The website. Town. Yes.
So clerk, greenhouse, library?
Yeah.
Library. And standard. And the days before, I know the Vermont Standard is probably tomorrow because we have to get this to them without, without them staying held.
Yeah, you have a little breathing room on the others, um.
Is it fifteen days?
It's fifteen days, uh, really by November fourteenth, it should be posted everywhere because this, you know, Calista's not in on Fridays, so the fourteenth is the Thursday.
Okay. Okay. Did we vote on this version?
Yeah.
We did, all right. Um, so the public hearing notice.
You didn't vote on this?
You didn't vote on the notice.
The public hearing notice?
Okay, I think I made the motion.
You made the motion, I didn't.
Just a second.
Oh.
Second. All in favor of moving the public hearing notice to its next phase?
Aye.
Aye.
That was the form.
Thank you. All right, um. So I think that's it under agenda item five, which was wrapping up the, uh, revisions to the zoning ordinance. That's a big chunk of time and work that everyone put into that, so thank you very much. Um. Number six is planning for our next meeting. We've been alluding to that, Monday, December second, that's gonna be our regular meeting here. So everybody should have it in their calendars already. Um, if we start at seven, is it just a normal two-hour meeting and we see what happens?
Um, so you you probably open your meeting and then open the hearing.
Right.
Are we opening the hearing within our meeting?
Yeah.
Usually.
Okay.
And nothing else on the agenda, so you have two hours.
Okay.
And well, you I would put on the agenda, uh, discuss input that you got from the public. Cause if there's just a few minor tweaks you can make right then. Be to enable you to send it on to the select board.
So the goal will be hopefully to, um, make any necessary revisions and close it out at the end of the night and present it to the select board if you can.
I mean, I, in a perfect world, if everyone shows up with tomatoes and pitchforks, you know, it's not.
Okay, we'll find out. So everybody's gonna be you and me.
Where are you?
And Shanann. And hopefully Red. Um, okay, great.
So we'll sit further away.
So I think that brings us to the end of our, uh, formal agenda unless there are other, any other business or other public comments.
So we have our plan for the budget, we discussed that, the planning report, you're doing that, which should be pretty simple. And the only other thing that has come up other than this is the parking. I I saw that you sent an email to the select board and copied us on that parking abandoned cars situation. Have you heard anything back on that?
I have not.
Yeah, other than that, I I don't have anything else.
Okay. I think the select board has a lot on their plate right now, but I will, I will try to follow up on that. Okay, um. I think we're at the end and unless anyone objects, I think we can adjourn.
Do we have any other public comments besides Ray? Uh, we don't have Claire, Rich. Ray, do you have anything else?
Nothing. All right.
All right, I move to adjourn.
Second. In favor? Thank you everybody. Fifteen minutes early.
Yeah.